Good evening to you all and welcome to the Monday, November 19th, 2018 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right, Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littkenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And again, welcome to you all. We are delighted you're with us this evening, this important evening. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Yes, sir. We have TR 18-50 Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an interim agreement with the top-ranked respondent for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project.
All right, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of Council. I have, if the Council will bear with me for just a moment, I have a few comments that I would like to make to introduce this topic. What I would like to do is just provide background on the action that is requested of the City Council tonight, which is to approve an interim agreement with a top-ranked proposer for the West Falls Church Economic Development process. The evaluation committee has given you a unanimous recommendation, and so that is the requested action tonight. I'd like to provide sort of the process that led us to this point. I'd like to describe the evaluation process that has taken place and lay out some of the principal deal terms that are enshrined in the interim agreement that has been prepared and is now before the City Council. Following that presentation from me, then we'll invite Alvarez and Marcel to provide a few slides that will summarize what I've tried to verbalize, and they'll say it actually much more clearly and concisely than I will. But that'll be a very useful thing, I think, for the public to really get just in sort of the basic terms of sort of what the key deal terms are tonight. Carly Aubrey, who's been our fearless project manager for this project, will then describe for the public what the anticipated next steps would be in our process. Then, following that, then via requested action by the City Council to authorize the city manager to execute the interim agreement. And then, following that, we'd have a presentation from the selected firm, from the top-ranked firm. So that's what we would propose to do tonight. So first, by way of introduction of this item, I will go back about five years to the school board of the City of Falls Church grappling with its capital improvements program and specifically the question about how to finance a brand-new high school. And it was the school board who first envisioned the idea of trying to take a portion of the current George Mason High School to market to generate revenue, to help offset the cost that was known to be. It would be very expensive to build the type and the quality of the high school that the school board wanted to build. What helped that planning effort really be realized was a boundary adjustment that was executed in 2013 as part of the sale of the water system. That boundary adjustment with Fairfax County brought the campus into the city limits, and that really was the key thing that would allow the city to capture future revenue from commercial development, not just a land transaction value. After that boundary adjustment, we formed, the City Council chartered, a campus planning steering committee that was composed of the Planning Commission, School Board, Economic Development Authority, and City Council. One of the things that they did was a space-fit analysis. They also asked the Urban Land Institute to do a technical assistance panel, to bring experts in this area to advise the city on the potential for taking a certain amount of land, up to 10 acres, to market on this site. That was done, and it's remarkable how much that Urban Land Institute report has, their recommendations have actually been prophecies for how much of this planning effort has proceeded. Following that, we received an unsolicited proposal from the private sector to do economic development and build a high school, all in one comprehensive agreement. The City Council and the school board worked for about a year to consider that unsolicited proposal, and at the end of the day, it was determined that that was not to the city's best advantage. And so we went back to the drawing board to proceed along two paths. One, to procure a high school, which the school board is experienced in doing, and two, to take land to market and entitle it, which is something that the city is very experienced in how to do. A key step in that process was first the public's confidence in this overall plan. A, the public's confidence in the need for a new high school, and two, the public's confidence in our ability to monetize a portion and the appropriateness of the city to try to seek value for a portion of the campus land in order to help pay for that high school. That public referendum was voted on in November in 2017, and the 10 acres of private development featured very prominently in the public approval for the issuance of $120 million of debt for the high school. Since that referendum, the planning has really accelerated. The school board has fulfilled its obligations under this sort of twofold or double-tracked approach, and they're in the process right now of finalizing schematic plans for a high school with the team of Gilbane as the general contractor and Stantec as the architect. That was presented on Sunday yesterday and is now, is out to the public to see. The city developed first a request for conceptual proposals with extensive input, and that document also reflected, I think, the prior three years of intense planning and public outreach engagement on the site. And I want to read the vision that was encapsulated in that original RFP that was issued in March of 2018. "West Falls Church is envisioned as an urban place with high-quality commercial, retail, hotel, and residential buildings, well-designed streets, and enjoyable public spaces. Tree-lined streets will have ample sidewalks bordered by interesting restaurants and shops and will be filled at all hours with people eating, shopping, meeting friends, walking through on their way to class, work, or home. West Falls Church is envisioned to generate revenue for the city, to offset capital costs of the new high school, to be a local and regional destination with an authentic sense of place that grows more and more interesting, relevant, and attractive as it matures with time. It will be a transit-oriented development that takes advantage of the proximity to the West Falls Church metro station. It will be environmentally sustainable and resilient and designed to thoughtfully embrace emerging trends in technology and society. It will naturally complement the educational community immediately adjacent on the campuses of George Mason High School, Mary Ellen Middle School, and the UVA and Virginia Tech Northern Virginia Center. And finally, it will be a vibrant urban neighborhood where people will live, work, and shop, as well as learn, create, and play." That was the vision that was developed through those three years of town hall meetings and deliberation about how we should, A, build a new high school, and, two, the type of place that we wanted to create in taking this land to market. We received a very strong response to that request for conceptual proposals. We had six of the top-flight developers in the mid-Atlantic, in the eastern seaboard who expressed interest in partnering with the city. We formed an evaluation committee, and that committee down-selected that to three finalists. We issued a request for detailed proposals, and that request for detailed proposals also included required elements and desired elements, and those also were developed with community input and a lot of discussion. The evaluation committee worked very hard to consider these detailed proposals. They were received on August 29th of this summer. The evaluation committee was represented by Aaron Gill on the school board, Bob Young on the Economic Development Authority, Russ Wadisco on the Planning Commission, our superintendent, Dr. Peter Noonan, an independent consultant, Bob Wolf, City Council members initially with Letty Hardy in the first round, Mayor Tarter, and in the second round with Ross Littkenhouse and Mayor Tarter, the city manager, and our Director of Planning, Paul Stoddard. We were advised throughout the evaluation process by our city attorney, who has been working very hard on the interim agreements and all the documents that are before you, and provided really sound advice throughout this process. Our commercial real estate advisor Alvarez and Marcel have been indispensable to us. We don't often take a land to market, and having someone who's done this and advised public agencies, universities, state governments, nonprofit entities across the country on how to do this most effectively to realize our goals, so thank you to the Alvarez and Marcel team. Carly Aubrey, our project manager, and Jim Wise, our Director of Procurement, has really led a process that has been very orderly, it's been well-organized, and it's been rigorous. The evaluation committee met eight times over the detailed proposals and ultimately came to unanimous decisions. The evaluation process was geared into three principal areas. One, to establish which of the proposals would provide the city the best immediate return in terms of the transaction value, as well as the best long-term financial value in terms of the commercial components and the long-term tax yield. That was item number one. Item number two in the evaluation process was the quality of the program, and that was laid out in the RFDP of the types of things, the environmental sustainability, the tree-lined streets, the placemaking, the civic uses. That's always in the realm of the quality of the program. And then the third big area of evaluation was execution. Does the team have the expertise? Do they have the track record? What are their liked projects that we can go and see to see how well they've accomplished it? That was one level of our analysis of their execution risk, but we also were provided their pro formas. We were able to go through all of their financials. It was an open-book process, so we could test, are their yields appropriate? How much risk are they taking on? How leveraged will they be? We analyzed it from that perspective as well. So again, on November 5th, the evaluation committee came to the City Council and presented a unanimous recommendation. In addition, during this period of time, the city received another unsolicited proposal outside of the RFP process, and I want to speak about that just briefly. The city was approached with an anonymous corporate headquarters that was presented to us in confidence, that was seeking to relocate our corporate headquarters at a spot somewhere in this region. The city looked at that proposal, studied it in depth. It was not part of the formal evaluation process, but that proposal also came and was presented to the City Council with all the facts as best we knew them. At the end of the day, the City Council decided to pick a firm that actually participated in the process. And before I announce the name of that firm, I just want to say a note about the other competing firm. We had a proposal from EYA, PN Hoffman Regency Center's team. That is the team that the evaluation committee recommends, and you'll get to meet them and hear from them later today, later this evening. The other detailed proposal that we received was from the team of Rushmark and from Hit Construction. It was an outstanding proposal as well, very competitive, very thoughtful, and very well-constructed. That proposal had as a really important feature to it, a proposal that they had taken to Virginia Tech as well, and a converged concept that was very attractive. The evaluation committee looked at that, considered it from all directions, and knowing that we had two really good choices to make, ultimately, the evaluation committee did come to unanimous recommendation to go with the EYA, PN Hoffman, and Regency team. And I think as we go through the details of that proposal, the value proposition to the city, the quality of the program, and the execution feasibility of their program, I think the community will understand that recommendation, and we ask for the Council's support for that recommendation. So if the Council agrees with this recommendation tonight, we will then hear from the term, from the team, they'll have an opportunity to introduce themselves to the community, and we'll have lots of town halls, and we'll get to do the process that we're very familiar with for land use cases in the City of Falls Church, and we really look forward to that. So now let me turn to the interim agreement itself. And if I could first turn it just to Carol McCosker to describe in broad terms, what is an interim agreement? Why is it necessary? What does it do and what does it not do in terms of the structure? Then I would like to just do a quick summary of the major deal terms. We'll then ask Alvarez and Marcel to kind of present those terms in the form of a PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll discuss schedule, and then from there, we'll take questions from Council prior to the requested action by Council.
The purpose of the interim agreement is to enable the parties to work out, to allow the proposed developer and the developer at this point to have access to the site and to protect both parties as they get ready to enter into the comprehensive agreement, which will provide for the terms of the ground lease and the transfers of the land and the final scheduling and land uses on the site. The interim agreement is one that was issued, it was included when the RFDP was issued. It's had some, a little bit of additions, discussion, trying to correct some things, but it's really substantially what was issued at that time. It has a term that goes till execution of the comprehensive agreement unless it's terminated prior there to, in accordance with its terms. There's going to be an initial due diligence period of 52 days, which, because we've had such time pressure, was sort of a compromise, that's why it's an odd number, 52 days, but that will allow the developer to study the site and make sure there aren't huge impediments to moving forward. It allows them to have access during that site and provides terms for that access, which includes notice to the city. It includes also working with the school board and making sure that they have the superintendent's permission to enter the property so that things are coordinated well with the ongoing school use of the site. It provides for an insurance indemnification. It also outlines the special exception entitlement process. The plan is that as of the end of May 2019, there will be an entry into a comprehensive agreement, including a ground lease, and approval of a special exception entitlement under the B2 zoning, as well as the initial payments will begin at that time. So the interim agreement outlines the manner in which we get to, how we work together to get the special exception entitlement process. It provides for security deposits during this initial period of time to ensure that the developer meets their obligations. It outlines in very broad-brush terms the comprehensive agreement terms, although to a great extent, what the manager will go over in terms of the material terms are an attachment, and they set many of the deal terms. But this agreement simply provides for what will be in the comprehensive agreement, such as a schedule, phasing, things like that. And finally, it provides for what would happen in the event of various kinds of termination, termination during the due diligence period. The developer will have the option to walk away if there are problems found, and then other terminations that might be based on default, what happens in that case, and terminations that might occur because the party simply can't reach a deal, what we call an unwind event, and the terms provide for how we deal with it at that time. And so those are essentially the provisions. It's not a long agreement. The purpose of it is to get us to the comprehensive agreement and enable the parties to work together during that time and have their understandings of how they're going to get to that point.
Okay, so I will now describe some of the material terms, and I'll be followed by a presentation by Alvarez and Marcel. So the, in terms of the transaction itself, it is in the form of a ground lease for the majority of the site. The exception to the ground lease will be a portion of the site that is intended for condominiums, and those would be sold fee simple to the developer. The ground lease term would be a 90-year, 99-year ground lease. The payments for the land, the base payments that are committed, is $44.5 million. That will come in a stream of payments, with the first payment being upon execution of a comprehensive agreement, which is scheduled for May of 2019, about six months from now. So that initial payment of 6.5 million is not a deposit, is an actual down payment, is an equity payment for the capitalized ground lease. Following that, then there's a stream of four payments of $7 million each, the first one being upon delivery of the property, which is anticipated to be in the year of Payment number six is for Phase Two of the project, which would be for $10 million or the appraised value as described in the profit-sharing element of the material terms to this interim agreement. So the base land payments are $44.5 million. In addition, there are options for the city to consider during the interim period, which would increase that value. One of those is for a parking garage that was part of their original proposal, which would be located in the parking area where the high school is being designed. That parking would be sufficient to provide the parking that the schools need, as well as some additional parking for the private development as well. If that is exercised by the city, that would generate an additional $5.3 million to the base land agreement. In addition, the proposal has the concept of a community development authority, which would have the authority to issue bonds to help pay for infrastructure for the 10-acre site, and would be authorized to impose a tax on that 10-acre site exclusively that would then generate revenue to pay the debt service for those bonds. If that option is exercised by the city, that is expected to generate an additional $2 to $3 million in basic land value. So if both of those options are exercised by the city, that would generate a total potential land payments of up to $52.8 million. And then the additional appraised value would be on top of that. The capital, in addition to that, there's a proposal where the city would receive an ongoing stream of revenue from the property through a capital event administrative fee. And what that would be is every time the property is refinanced or sold, the city would receive a fee that would be comparable to what is today called a recordation tax, and it would be a 0.5% for the leasehold or 0.25% for the condominium units in perpetuity and for the life of the lease. That would be kind of in the form of an annuity to the city or a long-term stream of revenue for the city, and so we've tried to estimate what that would generate, and we'll discuss that in the presentation momentarily. The program is very important, we'll hear more about that later today, but it does have minimum commitments. Office is part of Phase One. A hotel, a limited or full-service hotel is part of Phase One. Civic space, a minimum of 20,000 gross square feet of programmable civic space that would be managed by the developer is part of Phase One, as well as a potential educational use of 6,000 square feet, which would be in addition to that civic space, or sort of part of that civic space in the same building. That building is envisioned to be adjacent to the hotel, so that civic space also can be expanded to be used for conferences or special events associated with that hotel. A grocery use, what the retail is anticipated to be anchored by a grocer, and that is anticipated to occupy between 25,000 and 45,000 square feet of the project. Overall, the total retail uses on the site are anticipated to be a minimum of 120,000 gross square feet, which includes the civic spaces that I detailed just a moment ago. The project proposes a diverse mix of housing, including 275,000 gross square feet approximately of multifamily apartments, 175,000 gross square feet of senior housing, approximately 150,000 to 175,000 gross square feet for for-sale condominiums. The affordable housing, 6% of all the residential mix would be set aside for affordable housing, at 60% AMI for the term of the ground lease. There is a provision that would allow the city to convert those units to cash if the city preferred. That would be at the city's choice. The Phase Two of the development is an important part of this program. As I've noted, the really significant part of the development would all happen at once in Phase One. I think that was a very compelling part of the evaluation of the proposal, that it won't sort of inch along, but instead, in terms of placemaking and the retail viability, the intent is to deliver a really substantial Phase One. But Phase Two is proposed to be composed of two parcels. One would be an office building of 265,000 square feet, and the other parcel of Phase Two would be a residential condominium of approximately 154,000 square feet. What the developer is committing to is a minimum payment of $10 million for Phase Two. However, an appraisal will be done at the time that Phase Two is ready, and the city will have the higher of the appraised value or $10 million. There is an infrastructure credit that would be part of the appraisal process, so that money that are spent to create the infrastructure that serves those parcels would be credited as part of that appraisal process. In addition, in the base terms, there is a provision that would allow, if the city and the developer are working together in good faith and agree that the office building is not financeable at that time, that the developer could proceed with the condominium portion for a payment of $10 million or appraised value, whichever is higher, again with the same infrastructure credit, in which case, the land on which the office would be built would revert to the city, and the city would retain that residual value of that land and can market it for office on its own. Those are some of the key provisions for Phase Two that we know we'll have discussion on and ultimately will be enshrined in the comprehensive agreement, but that's a good summary and outline of it. It is noted that if the city takes advantage of the Community Development Authority, that Phase Two would pay the tax on the, the special tax for the Community Development Authority along with Phase One. The sustainability commitments for the project is that it will meet LEED Neighborhood Development Gold, and the office will meet LEED Gold, Core and Shell, or the equivalent green building standard, and the residential and senior housing will achieve LEED Gold or equivalent standard, which will be secured by a bond, as we've done for other projects in the city. And if they achieve a lower LEED score or industry equivalent, then they would forfeit a portion or all of that bond. And lastly, the hotel is committed to be constructed to LEED Silver or the equivalent. Those are some of the terms that we've taken from the proposal and discussion with the developer that we wanted to enshrine in this or sort of elevate them to material terms. The comprehensive agreement ultimately is going to be a big document. Ms. McCosker is going to be very busy on it, and, you know, a lot of details to be worked out, but those are ones that we wanted to elevate to have as mutual commitments as we go forward in this interim agreement period. So having verbalized these terms, now if Alvarez and Marcel could just give its presentation, and Jen Boss with Alvarez and Marcel will walk us through this series of slides, if you would.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'll be reiterating many of the points that Wyatt just referenced, but I'd like to discuss three key topics. The first being the value that was offered in the proposal and further discussions, the program that's been presented, and then finally, some of the programmatic commitments that have come from the development team. To reiterate what the city manager mentioned, we have a base land value of $44.5 million, which is made up of two primary streams of payments. The first is the payment for the Phase One site, which totals $34.5 million, and we'll be diving- and we'll be diving into the stream of payments that make that up in just a moment. The second component of the base land value is the payment for the Phase Two site, which at a minimum is ten million dollars, but as Mr. Shields referenced, will be based on an appraisal at the time that the Phase Two project is initiated. In addition to the base land value of forty-four point five million dollars, there is an opportunity for additional land payments, largely the off-site parking garage, that is in the current planned parking lot for the high school. And the second component is the Community Development Authority, which would be a self-taxing district that could issue bonds to fund infrastructure, and then the bonds would be repaid by the tax that is imposed on the site, both Phases One and Two. Adding the base land value and the additional land payment opportunities together yields a total of fifty-two point eight million dollars in total land value. In addition to the land payments, there's an opportunity for ongoing participation from the project in the form of a capital event administrative fee, and that payment is captured on this slide at an estimated two point four million dollars. What's important to note is that this payment represents only a single cycle of a refinance or a sale of the site. But because this opportunity is available throughout the entire ninety-nine-year ground lease, we anticipate that there will be multiple cycles of refinancing or sales of the site, and thus, this capital event payment could be significantly higher than the single cycle that's been represented here. Also important to note about the capital event payment, it enables the city to participate in any windfall that would occur at the site. Should the value increase and the project perform at a higher rate or a greater... Excuse me. If the project performs better than we're all anticipating and better than what has been performed by the development team, the city will be able to participate in that through those sales or refinancings. So adding in that first round of the capital event payment with the total land value, the total transaction is currently valued at fifty-five point two million dollars. And on the next slide, I will run through how those payments are going to be received by the city. Mr. Shields mentioned the initial six point five million dollar payment that will be paid at the signing of the comprehensive agreement, but recognizing that the school still needs to be constructed in that two-year period, the developers would not take possession of the site until 2021. And at that point in 2021, there will be a stream of seven million dollar payments over the course of four years. And those five payments, the six point five, and those seven million dollar payments, total the thirty-four point five million dollars that was referenced on the previous slide as the base land value. Off to the right, in the range of 2027 to 2029, we have the Phase Two base ten million dollar payment as well. And the capital event fee is represented off in the distance because there's not a set date for that refinancing or sale. There could be a range of dates, and so we don't know exactly when that would occur. Also, off of the main blue bar there are the additional revenue opportunities of the three million dollars for the CDA, which is anticipated in 2021, and the five point three million dollars for off-site parking, should the city elect to explore that option further. And that would be paid in 2023 at this point. Also important to note on this timeline slide is the two phases that Mr. Shields described. There's a large amount of density that's delivered as part of Phase One with a wide diversity of uses, as you can see, ranging from several types of residential development, including multifamily, condo, and senior housing, as well as different types of commercial uses: a hotel, grocer, various retailers, a civic space. And that total, in the response to the request for detailed proposals, was nine-hundred-and-forty thousand gross square feet. And as Mr. Shields described in Phase Two, a two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand square foot office building is contemplated, as well as a one-hundred-and-fifty thousand square foot condo development. The last thing I'd like to point out on this slide is the annual fiscal impact, which was estimated using the city's existing fiscal impact model. And currently, using the program that you see on this slide to the right, the fiscal impact is estimated at six point three million dollars annually, beginning at the delivery of the Phase One development. The development team who will be presenting tonight will go into far more detail about the program that they're presenting. But given that we just discussed that program, I'd like to point out a few of the key blocks. In the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the multifamily development, which would be anchored by a grocer on the ground floor. To the left, along Route Seven, is the Phase One office building. Just above it is the Phase One condo building. To the left, in the gray and blue, is the off-site parking garage that's currently being contemplated that could generate additional land value. Above that, the angled white building there is the hotel component. And above that is the civic building that Mr. Shields described. That's the twenty-six thousand square foot civic space that would also have an education component. The northeast block has a combination of both Phase One and Phase Two uses. The lower left-hand corner of that block is the senior building, which would be a part of the Phase One development. And the other two parcels are the condo to the north and the office to the east. On the next slide, we'd like to show you an alternative that the developers presented to us in the case that the city elects not to move forward with the off-site garage. In that case, the southeast block, the multifamily block, would have a larger parking component to make up for the lost spaces in the garage off to the west. Additionally, more parking would be constructed below grade. But what's important to note is that regardless of the scenario, both of these site plans offer the same density and set of uses despite there being a new configuration. To describe the program in just a bit more detail, I would like to point out four key components on this slide. To help orient you to the total scope of the project, please look at the density gross square footage, the total gross square footage line at the bottom. The project, as presented in the request for detailed proposals, totals over one point three millions gross square feet. And when you consider the mix of uses that were presented, off to the right, you can see the split of commercial versus residential uses. And of those one point three million square feet, forty-four percent of them are proposed as commercial uses. The third component to take a look at is what those commercial uses are made up of. On the left, at the top, you'll see the total gross square footage for office, and this is Phases One and Two, at just under four hundred thousand square feet. The hotel at eighty thousand square feet. And then the set of retail uses, including restaurants, a grocer, and other retail. The last thing to point out is the diversity of residential uses, including multifamily apartments, condos, and age-restricted senior housing. The last thing that I will discuss is some of the programmatic commitments that the city has discussed with the development team. Since the RFDP response, the development team has conducted presentations and had conversations with the city for the sole purpose of clarifying expectations and reducing risk that the program will shift at a later date because of any misunderstandings that there might have been or miscommunication that there might have been throughout the early-stage process. And through those presentations and conversations, we've clarified with the development team that there will be a rent subsidy for the civic uses that we've described, that there will be hotel brands that are included in the comprehensive agreement to ensure that they meet the city's expectations. There will be an office as part of Phase One, and a grocer of at least twenty thousand square feet. And should there be any difficulty achieving a grocer, one of the city's main concerns was ensuring that there would be a user to generate adequate long-term fiscal impact, because a grocer has an opportunity to generate quite a bit of economic impact over time. And that is a commitment that any replacement user, in the unlikely event that there is one, would be able to generate a similar fiscal impact. As the city manager described, affordable housing was included and has been committed to at six percent of the units across all residential uses at a rate of sixty percent of area median income. And the city has reserved a right to request cash rather than onsite units. And one last note on affordable housing is that those units will be affordable for the term of the ground lease, of the ninety-nine years. In terms of sustainability, which has been an important component of this project from the beginning, the development team has committed to a LEED Gold standard for neighborhood development, for the office at the Core and Shell level, and the residential and senior housing components. And should they fail to meet the LEED Gold requirement for the residential and senior housing, the city will have a fifty thousand dollar bond or a letter of credit available that they can collect on if the project only reaches a LEED Silver level after delivery. And then finally, the hotel component is also at the LEED Silver level. Now, city manager, I believe that you wanted the project manager to run through some next steps?
Yes, please. If you please. Is the council, before the council has, you know, questions or comments, if we could first just run through the schedule. What happens if the council does take the action tonight? What can the public expect to come next?
Good evening, council. So assuming the interim agreement is executed this evening, the next steps would be to post, the developer would post a deposit of five hundred thousand dollars next week. And then also, their due diligence period would start. And during the month of December, it's anticipated that there would be some... The start of town hall meetings and previews with the boards and commissions. And while that is going on, their due diligence period would be occurring and would estimate to end approximately January tenth. And then, subsequent to that, an additional one million dollar deposit would be made. Around January twenty-third, there would be a pre-submission of the special exception entitlement application, and that will give the city staff a chance to review it against the material terms and other items in the interim agreement, and also against application requirements of a special exception process. The submission of the SEE application is anticipated February fourth, with a first reading by council on February twenty-fifth. And then that will start the board and review, or the boards and commissions' review during primarily the month of March. And the planning commission is anticipated to take an action on April first. Subsequently, a city council's second reading would occur on May twenty-eighth. Prior to that, at the end of April, we're anticipating getting all the boards and commissions back, getting a final application, and having a final staff review. Subsequent to the second reading on May twenty-eighth, the comprehensive agreement is expected to be executed on May thirtieth. And then after that time, the developer will be able to apply for the special exception site plan application.
So just a couple of notes on that schedule. It's important for people to remember that this land use application would be a special exception entitlements, which is intended to be a pretty high-level entitlements. The site plan is where a lot of the details can be worked out, but it's really trying to get at density, building heights, permitted uses, in a conceptual plan. And so it'll be less detailed than other entitlements that the council and our boards and commissions are familiar with. And that's in large part of just acknowledging the schedule, which is tight for this. And then, second, I just want to highlight the importance of the school board in this entire process. The school board is currently, the land is titled to the school board. The school board is a key stakeholder in this. Like in the decision on the off-site parking, the school board is really key to that decision-making process, as well as just the whole interface area of how this project will interface with the school board. I just wanted to highlight that. It would be a really important part of our approval and review process as well. So that concludes the staff presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
All right. Thank you very much. As we always do, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, you're welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, the matter is closed. The public. If I could, I'd like to start by just making a few acknowledgements and thank-yous. This is an exciting day for the city. I think it's very exciting. It's a culmination of years of hard work by many people. And I'd like to acknowledge and thank just a few of those folks. First, the evaluation committee, which, as you heard, had representatives from different boards and commissions and the schools as well, and really brought with it folks with complementary backgrounds and expertise and brought a different city perspectives to the evaluation. So I thank them. Our boards and commissions, planning commission, EDA, environmental sustainability council, all had a role in getting us to where we are today. You heard about the schools as well, particularly the superintendent, Peter Noonan, has been heavily involved, but the school board as well. Tonight, we have three of the school board members here in the audience. So thank you all for all your participation. It's been quite helpful. Our consultants, Alvarez and Marcelle, in particular Jen Boss, Jay Brown, and Ted Richer. You all have been a key part of our team. We greatly appreciate your expertise and assistance with us. Staff, especially our city manager Wyatt Shields. I know you spent a whole lot of time on this, particularly in the past weeks, and so it's not gone unnoticed. We greatly appreciate it. Our city attorney, Carol McCroskey, Carly Aubrey, Jim Wise, our procurement officer, Jim Snyder, Paul Stoddard, director of planning, Karen Bawa, who's here as well, our CFO, and Becky Witzman from the Economic Development Office. Most importantly, though, I'd like to thank our community. Our community spent countless hours on this process, particularly as relates to development of the RFP and the detailed RFP, which articulate our community vision and goals. Although part of this by its nature has been done behind closed doors, the framework and basis for our decision tonight was set out by our community. And among the provisions, the RFP provided for, as you've heard tonight, financial payments to help pay for the school, outstanding urban design and place-making, long-term value to the city in the form of continuing property, sales, hotel, business license, and other taxes and other benefits to the city. And particularly, some important community values. As you heard, six percent of the living units, not just the multifamily residential, but senior living as well, will be affordable housing at sixty percent of AMI for the life of the project. Environmental sustainability figured high in this project, and we spent a whole lot of time on coming up with our RFP to make sure that we addressed the strong community values of environmental sustainability. Walkability, open space, civic and community space. They're all here, and they're all part of our RFP. No project is perfect and without risk, but we shouldn't let opportunity pass us by. We're on the cusp of a development that will allow us to proceed with a long-needed twenty-first-century high school, commensurate with our teaching staff and our community values, and which I believe will cement the city's position as an educational leader in the state, if not the country. It will also create a sense of place that will attract visitors from throughout the area, provide a long-term tax stream for our taxpayers. area, provide a long-term tax stream for our taxpayers, and I believe lasting benefits for generations to come. We had significant interest, and some great teams that made this a highly competitive effort. The finalists were especially strong with significant creativity, and some impressive professionals as part of their efforts. I'd like to thank all of those who participated in the process. I'm now going to turn it over to others before I let you know my thoughts on this particular proposed development, and see if my colleagues and council have any thoughts they'd like to offer. Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Mr. Shields, and Alvarez, Marcel. I think as Mr. Shields says, this project has been a long time coming, and it certainly long predates me, certainly an exciting milestone tonight in this long journey. So I started on this journey three years ago, when I was the newbie on council. And I think at that time, it felt like we had endless debate between the school board and city council, going till midnight every night, debating the need for a new high school. Then two years ago, I was part of the working group when we analyzed, I think it was over 13 options, on how to best deal with the campus up there, and really grappled with that really extraordinary debt service. And we ultimately decided that building the new high school from scratch was the best option. It was the most economical, actually, because it freed up the acreage for this development that we're contemplating tonight. And then one year ago, Falls Church passed the referendum that gave us approval to proceed. And so here we are. But since last November, we spent a long time hearing what community input should be, what should happen at the site. That led to two rounds of the RFP, which really led to really impressive responses from the development community on what the market would like to do up there. And I think as we carefully considered all the proposals, I concur with staff's recommendation that I believe the proposal in front of us tonight really best achieves the goals outlined by Mr. Shields and the community vision. It really creates the best value for the city, especially in the long run. Not only does it cover the cost of the debt service for the high school, but really creates kind of long-term value for the city. The second I think that's really important is it really creates a healthy, diverse of mixes immediately in Phase One. I think it's something that we believe is important to do, really have a community built, and not just residential immediately, for example. And third, it really achieves that vision of a vibrant, walkable community that we all talk about, will be a destination not only for city residents, but hopefully the entire region. And ultimately, I think this is really going to be transformational for us. It'll be a catalyst for the west end of the city, which we believe has so much potential for Falls Church. I think what was also really important to me, and most impressive in this proposal, is I just believe that this team has not only the skills and competency to pull this off, but we know that there could be tough times ahead. And we want a team that's going to be competent and committed to Falls Church to see this through for us. And we believe that this finalist is that. So we acknowledge that we haven't been able to share details beyond executive summaries until now, until tonight. But I think speaking for most of council, we are committed to giving the community many more opportunities to ask questions, to learn, and to help further shape this project. I think starting tomorrow, we'll see website updates with the information. We're going to continue the Sunday series town hall, which I think is an important way to kind of hear from the community. This next six months ahead is going to be even more crucial than the time leading up to now, because this is really just getting started. So we really invite the community to get involved. And while it is Thanksgiving week, I will kind of echo a lot of what the mayor said in terms of thanking people. I want to thank the evaluation committee, and staff, and consultants for all the hard work and diligence paid. Thank you very much for those hours. It's definitely recognized. To my colleagues for many long and thoughtful deliberations, also many times till midnight as well. And really, ultimately, the public's confidence us in embarking on this process and the civic engagement to come. So hopefully everyone will stay involved again, a long time in this journey, but really just beginning tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Others who would like to make some comments? Anyone? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to reiterate my thanks to all the folks who've been involved that Ms. Hardy ran through the list of. It's been, I think, a very thorough process, and as open as it could be. I'd like tonight to express my strong support and appreciation for the process that we went through, and my qualified support for the product that it has yielded. And I wanted to make a few comments in the nature of questions that perhaps the folks from EYA, et cetera, might address when they make their presentation, assuming that the council goes forward with this. First, good features in my mind, there's no city gives to the applicant. There's been a lot of publicity about, you know, what the jurisdictions that were in search of Amazon gave in order to attract Amazon. It's my understanding that this deal has got no city money in it. There's nothing that we're doing that we wouldn't already do in the terms, in the way of infrastructure, that we're doing with the help of state money also. And I think that's a strong plus. It is a genuine mixed-use development. You've seen the actual true mix of uses, residential condominiums, which is significant, rental with age-restricted, office hotel, civic space, commercial with grocer. In the first phase alone, we have the blueprint of a true mixed-use community that will be building on the vacant space that will occur when the high school is torn down. Third, it's brought to us by, as Ms. Hardy said, a company that has the ability to carry out the deal. The applications that we received, I think, without going into any detail, were all, each of them had some very strong positive features. No one had all the strong positive features that we might want, but what distinguished this group not only is the genuine mixed use of it, but also their reputation and ability to carry out what they're bringing to us tonight in the way of promises. And finally, obviously, the revenue that we would earn from this more than covers the cost of the school bond. The $6 million a year that we have to pay for 30 years will be more than covered by the revenue generated by this. The areas of concern, I just wanted to touch on if I could. The first is housing. It is a strong plus that we're getting permanent affordable housing language, as we had with a couple of the other developments that we approved recently, as this project goes forward. I think we have lost a little bit of a focus on the fact that the 6% number was, when adopted some years ago, meant to be a kind of baseline minimum for affordable and workforce housing. In instances where extraordinary provisions were made, exceptions were given to developers to produce, you know, more density, more coverage, the expectation was that we would try to get more than 6%. That's kind of the negative way to say it. The positive way to say it is we're going to be building, I think, a great community up here, and why wouldn't we want, you know, a broad as possible a mix of people to benefit from it? Particularly in the workforce housing area, 60% AMI reaches a certain segment of our population, but as we've seen in other jurisdictions, there's increasing interest in, you know, 80, 100, even 120% AMI to provide housing options for, you know, you're well compensated, but, you know, given the expense of living in this area, not lavishly compensated, teachers and law enforcement, and people who are working in our community, in the service sector. I would just hope that as we go forward here, we might discuss that further and hear from the housing commission on that. Second area of concern is parking. Seems like we're moving in a good direction right now, as I understand it from the schools' folks, we have 450 parking spaces at the high school. As this plan comes to us, there are 400 dedicated parking spaces. There are some in the community that are not going to like that. They have already let us know that if we're building a better high school, we should have more parking places. I don't necessarily agree with that in the long term, because I think, you know, mobility is changing, and eventually, you know, we may not have as much need for individual parking spots. And so I'm drawn to the proposal as it's presented to us here, because the parking facility that's contemplated could, somewhere down the years, be repurposed to other uses if it turns out we don't need as many parking spaces as we're providing. And also, the shared parking concept is something I'd like to hear more about, and I'd like to make sure the community understands that, so that when folks are, you know, trooping up there to go to an athletic event the same night, that there's a play going on at the same night, that there's, you know, a middle school program, our surge parking needs are significant, and we do want this entire area to be a community use-oriented area. And, you know, at least for the foreseeable future, parking is a significant component of that. A word about, two other things. One, sort of the rules of verticality. The paper that we have before us contemplates three to 14 stories. It was my understanding that the planning commission did not set a cap on the height for this area of development. I would like to hear more about that as we discuss this in the coming months. You know, if we're willing to give more height, we can get some other things that we might want, such as more open space, perhaps more affordable workforce housing. So I hope that we don't, you know, well, let me express it positively. If there's a market reason that the buildings can't be taller than 14 stories, I think we have to respect that. If that number is there simply because somebody thinks that sounds like a non-threatening number, I'd like us to have a community conversation about whether a little more vertical might enable us to get some of the other things that we'd like, whether it's, you know, the revenues to do more affordable workforce housing, provide more open space, do more in the way of environmental considerations. I hope we can talk about that. Finally, when you get off the interstate, off 66, drop into Falls Church, here we are. Welcome to the city of Falls Church. What do you see? What are you going to see 10 years from now? The placemaking component is not only interior to the project, but also how the project faces and meets what's outside of it, what's across the street from it, what's down in the federal realty property, what's across the block in the non-buyer property. Right now is when we are beginning to design what, you know, future generations of people are going to be impressed with when they first hit the city of Falls Church. It really is in some ways going to become the kind of new north, or the new west downtown. Based on what I've seen so far, you know, the designs of the buildings are, they're fine, but, you know, we're not yet at the point where we've seen a lot of detail. I'd hope that, you know, the architectural geniuses could bring us something that really looks distinctively Falls Church. And I can't be any more specific than that, but it needs to look different from how it looks when I get off the interstate in Manassas, or Centerville, or whatever. It needs to look like Falls Church. Right now, at the corner of Haycock and Seven, we have a nice stand of trees. I can guarantee you that there will be blood in the streets when the chainsaws take those trees down, and a lot of folks aren't going to like that. And I think we need to have a compelling visual corner there that speaks not only to the areas around it, but also sends a message that Falls Church is a unique and different kind of place. A couple of questions to the staff, if I could. The CDA concept is new to us. I mean, it's not a new idea, but it's not something that we have. If we pursue that route and set up a CDA, and they have their own taxing authority, as was explained, does the city have any legal or moral liability to back up that CDA?
In the interim agreement, what we've tried to lay out there is that the city would not have a general obligation, or a moral obligation, to back up the bonds issued by the CDA. But as you note, we've not created a CDA before, so we need to go through the steps of really understanding what the city's obligations would be, even with that statement, and just make sure that our eyes are completely open as we go into it. It does create value in terms of the base land value, and it may actually be a very sensible and sound way to help finance infrastructure. But we do, the reason it's listed here as a concept, as an option, is that we do want to take the time to do our due diligence on that option.
So the, thank you. So the process of exploring that would be done, you know, in parallel with this public process that we're talking about here? Would be done before the CDA is signed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it would involve the EDA and other parties that might have interest or, you know, authority in that area? Let's just, I know this is speculative, so you don't have to answer if you don't want to, but if we did have to assume the debt obligation for what the CDA would stand in for, would we still be underneath all those magic lines that we see at budget time as far as the city's burden of debt that we're carrying?
Well, the challenge of our high school is that we get right up to those lines, and so that is why we've wanted the CDA to be off the city's balance sheet. So that will remain foremost in our minds as we think about this.
Okay. Thanks. It's obviously an area that we have some more work to do, and that's fine. The other question I had was just a simple dollars question. I know, again, it's hard to project the total value of this project, but what are we at if the whole thing's built out? Is it a $200 million project, or how big, what's the price tag on this for the headlines? You know, "City of Falls Church approves X hundred million dollar project." What's, do we have a number?
In terms of total... Sorry, sir. In terms of total development costs, including acquisition, financing, and construction of all the infrastructure and vertical elements, both Phase One and Phase Two, it's approximately $500 million.
Okay. Thank you. So half a billion dollars is the approximate number. All right. Thanks to my colleagues for enduring. I'll not, I think, have anything further to say. I do want to, again, thank those who have worked so hard to get us to the point where we are now. A lot of work's been done to get us, you know, really good base terms for the public process to begin. And we haven't talked about it yet, but a component of our work has been, you know, engagement with our neighbors, the county, Womata, the residential neighbors, and that, of course, will be part of the process that unfolds over the next few months. And that public process, I think, is very important, because as dandy as we think this project is, we need to get, you know, public feedback and buy-in. The school bond referendum passed with 64% of the vote, which is extremely strong. However, that does mean there are 36% of the people who weren't too keen on the idea at all. And I would like to see us as a community to be able to bring that 36%, or at least a substantial portion of it, along, now that they see that we can do something really exciting with the high school, and extremely exciting with the development that is not only financially lucrative, but also, you know, helps advance Falls Church's vision of itself as a unique place in the many decades ahead. So I look forward to hearing from groups like the CACT, Architectural Advisory Board, Housing Commission, Urban Forester ESC, and the Planning Commission as we go down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Who else would like to? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Z?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just make a note? The chairman of the planning commission is here. He's actually run out of this planning commission meeting, but he was part of the evaluation process, and I think he wanted to just say a word to the council from the evaluation committee perspective. And since he's here only for about five minutes, I thought I just might note that.
Mr. Wadiska, do you want to actually speak?
Sure.
All right. Come on down. I don't want to force you.
Thank you, Wyatt. Good evening, members of the city council. I did step out of the planning commission meeting real briefly. I just wanted to say it was quite an honor to serve on this committee, and myself and those who were on it spent a lot of time and a lot of energy reviewing these proposals with the assistance of our advisors. We wanted to, not just the qualitative elements, but also the quantitative side of it. And I just want to sort of really briefly say that it was an embarrassment of riches for the city, and the decision, while ultimately I was able to make a decision, there was a lot to consider here, and we did look at, as a committee and myself, at all of the variables. And I just wanted to sort of say I lend my support to, and voted accordingly, that on the recommendation that's being made here, and that I think it's going to... on this, on the recommendation that's being made here, and that I think it's going to be something that could potentially be really transformational for the city. The committee worked really hard, and again, it was really an honor. I just wanted to just put my support behind it individually as something that we're putting forward before the city council. So, thank you for your time into evaluating it. It's a wonderful project here, I think.
All right, thank you for your time and your participation. It was invaluable, so greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Z, did you have something you'd like to say?
Oh, I always have something to say. So as I was rushing out this afternoon, this evening, to county council, I looked in the mail, and this arrived in the mail. It said that Falls Church wins the BML President's Award, 2018 grand prize winner, and the tagline is for environmental quality that Falls Church uses smart design to drive community and environmental improvements. So, good for us. And also good for us that we have selected what I consider to be a world-class team, someone with not only local renown, but the chops have been proven by implementing and bringing smart design to this region. And I think this team represents our best chance for a successful project, successful conclusion, to give us the kind of project that we're looking for in the city. The following characteristics inform my decision tonight. First of all, we realize that the interim agreement, the IA, is just really the end of the beginning. And these are not my words going for it, but I stole them from somebody else, probably more lyrical than me, that we now have the tectonic plates of the agreement in place, that we have the broad contours of the project based on a landscape which has emerged after epical, formative discussions with members of our community. Epical. It has been quite a few years. Now, any partnership has to be entered with sound judgment, clear eyes and clear thinking. This partnership has great promise. First of all, they've more or less met the required elements, and they've really, in my mind, done wonders with the desired elements, the things that we wanted. They paid attention to what we said were our community values, and for the most part, they've made a great start at producing that. I will participate to have a comprehensive agreement that puts the city in a good spot, one that has manageable risk, and a higher incorporation of the desired features. What struck me about this project was that it had great urban design, and people can call it walkability, looks pretty. I'm glad, finally, that my master's from Columbia University in urban design allowed me to be a critic of this particular project. If there's an architect or planner in the room, I would say that how you've established the major axis and the minor axis is brilliant with the layout of the buildings around it. That urban space to green space reminds me of some great places in Europe. I can just almost see in my mind's eye, a few years ago, walking through parts of Prague with those wide boulevards and people shopping and the glow of the, of the lights in December, and I think this project has promised to give us that as well. More work is needed to future-proof the development. I mean, environmental sustainability is not so much about a bunch of people wanting to hug trees, but it is about future-proofing. It is about making sure that the buildings, the projects that we bring online, are not obsolete from the moment we open the doors for business. And so in that regard, the Silver Hotel is an area of some concern. I get it, hotels are difficult to do, and we want to make sure that you're able to bring the best hotel package to us. Having said that, we also know that there are platinum and there are beyond platinum hotels, and if we keep the hotel to silver, I will look for an offset somewhere else that gives us the benefit so that we true up our community values here. The off-site parking is intriguing, and I think it adds to the betterment of the design. I think it's, it's, it would be retrospective to think that we would recommend that you spend 25% of your early funds into underground parking. We don't know what the future is going to bring, obviously, but we don't want to be a city that says 10 years from now that five stories of underground parking are suitable for nothing more than mushroom farms. We're not going to do that here. I would urge the school board and school population and city to get together to make sure that we have that building, the off-site parking where it's currently situated. I really love the civic space and the community space. I think it's, it is part of what we're looking for, and it goes a long ways into giving us the desired features. I think it's brilliant the way it faces the school and the public space, the plaza in front of it. And so finally, Phase Two. We don't know what, where we're going to be 10 years from now, and I think there will be a lot of discussion about how that shapes, shapes up. I, for one, would be willing, and I desire, to continue to work this piece so that we end up with the best possible function for that area. The one thing we do know is that I am certainly not an expert in the effects of, say, a large technology company coming to this area, but it's obviously going to be much greater than just the 25,000 people for the next 10 years. The one known thing is that there's going to be a tremendous investment in higher education, and the one thing we also know as part of that is that the Virginia Tech campus will be adjacent to the site. So that's, that's huge. And with that, I shall conclude. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And who's next? Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Russ mentioned, when he came up to the podium a minute, a minute ago, that it was an honor to serve with the evaluation committee and being part of this process. And Russ, I have to echo that comment as I was walking out the door today to head up to the council meeting on the eve of a decision like this. For me, it was an honor to serve alongside the folks in the community, the public, the development teams that bid, our advisors, council members, city staff, because the countless hours of review and analysis over these past, really, years, months, and more recently, late nights, weekends, blood, sweat, mostly paper cuts, blood, sweat, and some tears, I'm sure, have really brought us to a pivotal moment in our city's history. And for, for most of us, I think we recognize that this is a truly multi-generational decision that's being made tonight, and I don't think that anyone carries that lightly. For me, you know, as a council member, a member of the evaluation committee, and more importantly, as a citizen, you know, I'm confident that through this evaluation process, we've not only chosen a best-in-class development team to partner with, but we've also chosen a development program that is community-centric and one that best reflects our values and I think the public desires. Still some work to be done, but it's gotten us to that point. And I think of equal importance, we've negotiated an agreement through months of effort that generates substantial upfront value for the city, while also maximizing the ongoing fiscal impact that's going to produce revenue to offset our capital improvements, and finally give us the shot in the arm that we need to focus on easing down our tax rate. And finally, through a collective effort, we have also built in several revenue-enhancing mechanisms that are going to serve as an annuity for the city's coffers, and give the city the ability to capture some additional value that the development itself and the surrounding developments will bring to this site specifically, long, long after all of us are gone. I am very pleased with the outcome, and again, I thank the community, the city staff, our outside advisors, my fellow council, and the respondents for working to get us to this monumental decision. And we've got many, many more miles to go, as our mayor likes to say, late at night, to bring this development to life, but, but tonight, we're moving closer to realizing this bright new horizon for the city. So, we're going to close with one long chapter of tireless effort, and immediately tomorrow, begin the next, as we work to polish the edges of what I think is an already quality deal, and commit to enhance the value and contributions that this project's going to make for all corners of the community. So, for me, Russ, it's an honor to be sitting up here and have worked alongside a lot of the people in this room, and folks that are not here who've worked tirelessly over months and years to get us to this point. Certainly not lost on me, and I don't think it'll be lost on anybody else. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank everyone involved in this process, especially the evaluation committee, all those who have been engaged, and certainly the work of our consultants. I do have some serious concerns about this project, which I'll now express. The first is process concerns. There's virtually no member of the public here this evening, other than those directly involved in the process, and there's a reason for that, because information was not available to them in advance of this meeting. In fact, information only of key issues only became available to the council about three hours before this council meeting. So I have some process concerns. And in addition to the lack of information about this proposal, there's a total lack of information about the competing proposal. So therefore, how can the public support and know about the judgment we're going to make in an intelligent fashion with the absence of information that was available to the public? The second, really, most significant concern I have is the fundamental financial structure of this deal. The fact of the matter is that, in comparison to the other project, this deal generates a third of the amount of money as, in the year 2021, as the alternative. And in fact, over time, the payments have actually been drawn out and made less certain, even for Phase One. So then there's Phase Two. My question is, if we were certain of the money, why is there a Phase Two? Why don't we do all the project at one time, have the money upfront? Because my overriding concern is to generate the money we need to pay for our school, and there's, in my view, an unacceptable degree of uncertainty about these payments with this project. Now, let's focus on Phase Two. First of all, Phase Two may not happen at all, and if it doesn't happen, there's no penalty to the developer, except we get the land back, but no financial penalty to the developer. Secondly, Phase Two may be in two different forms. The one form may be purely residential, and the other form may be residential and apartment. And if purely residential, the numbers that you see on Page Six would be dramatically changed. So I think there was a need to put forth in the materials tonight more of the uncertainty and more of the downsides that are entirely possible with regard to the fundamental financial structure. I certainly share with my colleagues the interest in the overall project, the hope that the overall project might evolve into what has been proposed under the best case. The fact of the matter is, though, there's a significant amount of uncertainty of the finances of this. Less money upfront, longer money, longer time to get money anywhere near what the competing proposal provided within that timeframe, and a Phase Two which may not happen at all, or if it does, might be purely residential, as opposed to the kind of residential and office component that we see described on Page Six without the conditionality that's fundamental to this project. So I see some fundamental structural issues about this project actually generating what all of us hoped that it would generate. So for that reason, I want to make clear that, I hope, if the council votes, as I suspect they will, to move forward, that we will be able to nail down a project of the kind that's been talked about tonight. But right now, there's a significant amount of risk on the city and a significant amount of uncertainty about the actual financial returns, that in my view, is the fundamental reason why we're doing this at all. I would add as well, I see no Amazon HQ2 premium in this project. The numbers have not gone up as a result of the Amazon HQ2 project, which will invariably increase the real estate values throughout this region, and especially the close-in places in unique circumstances such as Falls Church and this project where it is, next to a metro station. So for all of these and other reasons, I must reluctantly vote no this evening, with the hopes that, that will finalize and make far more concrete than it is today, the revenue streams that are talked about and hoped for, but are anything but guaranteed in the project we have in front of us. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no this evening, participating and hoping that as we finalize this project, as the revenue streams go up, not down, and become more guaranteed, as well as the other placemaking qualities that are clearly positive parts of this project, that, that I'll be able to vote yes when we reach to a final conclusion, assuming that the council will vote to go this way with this group this evening. I do want to say, though, that in the materials tonight that are made available, because they're wide, they will be widely circulated, there needs to be a much better description of the possibilities that the finances will not occur and will not occur according to what people hope, and especially on Page Six, depending on whether there's a Phase Two at all, and if so, the content of this Phase Two, those percentages would change dramatically. Thank you very much.
Ms. Connolly, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a lot of years that I've been waiting to vote on this project. So first, I want to say how honored I am to be a representative of the citizens of Falls Church during this election process, and I, I think all of us up here took our role very seriously, that as we weighed everything, we were the representatives of the people of Falls Church. So this has been going on since, before I was elected five years ago. And recently, I came up with this image of a zipper to describe where we are, because every little piece has to fall in place. So I feel like tonight, we're like maybe one or two zippers further along. So that's very exciting for Falls Church. I am not a negotiator, and I am not a financial person, but I am so impressed with how carefully all of these proposals were reviewed, how they were analyzed, and I am very confident in voting on this on behalf of the citizens of Falls Church, because of the thorough work of others, because of the evaluation committee, because of our staff, and because of Alvaris and myself, and how they presented it to city council. We had numerous closed-session meetings, and although some may say that it wasn't aired to the public properly, as the representatives of the public, we had a really good chance of reviewing everything that came through, and I feel very confident in the information that was presented. So, we have been really connected to the voices, and while I'm not a negotiator, I am a listener, and why else would anybody go into city council except for the public good, and to listen and reflect what the community wants? So there were a lot of, there was a lot of reading, a lot of studying, a lot of questions to get to this point, and as someone else said, we're at the end of the beginning. So I urge everyone out there who's not sitting in the audience, but maybe watching this or reading it later, to take the time. We took a lot of time to go through all of these proposals, so take the time to absorb everything, all of the informations that you understand the whole project. I just want to focus for a minute on placemaking, because that's one of my favorite words, a word that I didn't know before I was a member of city council. And this project is going to make a wonderful place for us in Falls Church. It's outward-facing, it's inward-facing, it's school-facing, and it's metro-facing. Outward-facing, because it's going to welcome everybody in the whole community, create a new place where all of Falls Church will belong, and it also connects us with Fairfax County on both sides, as well as metro and our neighbors in the universities. Inward-facing, because it's going to provide a neighborhood community for people to live, work, and play. I didn't think about Prague, as Mr. Z did, but it will be a place where people want to be. It's school-facing, because it's designed to complement the school campus next door. It's going to provide safe routes to school, compatible uses, and shared features, and that's really good placemaking, because the school, as everybody knows here, is very important in Falls Church. And it's metro-facing, because it's going to include a clear connection to the West Falls Church metro, which connects us to the rest of the DC Metro. to the West Falls Church Metro, which connects us to the rest of the D.C. metropolitan area and into Fairfax County as well. And I think that's really important. Is it perfect? No. And we all agree that there's a lot more steps to go. So again, I urge everyone to take the time to read what's going to be on the website and ask questions. And I'm certain that Mr. Benton is going to publish a great article this week that will educate a lot of the public who aren't here tonight. I'm looking forward to meeting and working with the EYA Regency and PN Hoffman team. I'm looking at the side of the room, and I recognize Mr. Lasso, and that's all. So I'm looking forward to everyone, meeting people in Falls Church and getting to hear what the rest of the community would like. And so I'm going to vote yes tonight. And I just want to say how honored I am to place this vote on behalf of the current and future citizens of Falls Church.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to go last here and give you my thoughts. Although others in the running presented some very high-quality proposals, in my opinion, the EYA, PN Hoffman, and Regency team, their proposal best meets the stated criteria as a whole. This team's going to create an exciting sense of place, not just during business hours, but on nights and weekends, which will bring new customers and patrons to Falls Church, and better make Falls Church a destination for commerce. It's going to create a vibrant, walkable node in the city and attract people to the full length of the city, not just our downtown. It's going to provide high-quality retail, including significant tax generators, like a grocery store and restaurants. It's going to provide a true mix of uses, which include office, hotel, civic, community, arts and cultural uses, senior living, condominiums, and open space. It's going to enhance the city's reputation for the arts and culture. It's going to provide a diverse mix of uses that mitigates the city's risk, so that when one use is out of favor, such as offices right now, the project doesn't suffer like with half-empty office space, like some of our neighboring jurisdictions. Based on the city's own fiscal model, this proposal offers the best long-term value to the city. That includes upfront payments, but more importantly, recurring long-term tax and other generation. First phase of this development is substantial, which will start sizable tax payments sooner. This will also create an exciting sense of place earlier and mitigate risk relating to later phases of development. The proposal also works well with the school and offers the possibility of student enrichment activities right next door to the school. Several school representatives were on the evaluation committee. It also provides a requested shared school parking that the school asked for. As you heard, this developer and the development team has substantial experience with this type of placemaking, the most of any of the proposers through this process. It's also predominantly ground lease, with the exception of the condos, and so the city will eventually get most of the land back. Although there's some taller buildings, there's also open space, and the overall density is in keeping with the density elsewhere in the city. It will also catalyze development on neighboring Falls Church properties. And again, once again, to paraphrase, it's either Dan Z or Churchill, I'm not sure which, this is not the end of the process, nor the beginning of the end of the process. It is perhaps the end of the beginning. Now, the process moves into a more public phase. I look forward to broader public engagement and to continuing to work with our neighbors, Fairfax County, Virginia Tech, and Womata. In my opinion, this is indeed an exciting day for the city. All right. Do we have a, Mr. Z?
Mayor, I move to adopt TR-18-50 authorizing the city manager to enter into an interim agreement with EYA, PN Hoffman, Regency.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion carries six to one.
All right. Thank you. Mr., congratulations to all. Mr. Shields, did you want to, I guess, call up the developer and have them give a presentation?
Well, so now it gives me a lot of pleasure to invite Mr. Evan Goldman forward to give a presentation and introduce himself to the community. And I just want to say to Mr. Sean Seaman, who is also here in the room, and Rafael Munies, who with Regency Centers, I should say Sean Seaman is with PN Hoffman, and Rafael Munies with Regency Centers, and Evan Goldman are the principals that we have been speaking with throughout the evaluation process. So it's, I want to thank them for all of their hard work on this and really great thinking. We also have a good number of members of your team here as well. So Mr. Goldman, if you could come forward to give the presentation and also introduce your team.
Thank you. Okay. I'll try. We'll see if it works. Can overshadow me. Good evening. My name is Evan Goldman. I'm a development partner at EYA, and it's absolutely our pleasure to be here tonight, and we're thrilled with the outcome of the vote. First, just wanted to introduce a few people from the team, and then we'll go into a quick presentation. May I introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of PN Hoffman, we're certainly honored to be part of this project. My name's Sean Seaman. I'm a principal and executive vice president with the company. I've been with PN Hoffman for 18 years. We're a local developer, used to focus mainly on residential, and are really proud to be joining EYA, who I think does the same level of quality on residential development, mixed-use developments that we do in this region. And I think we bring quite a force on the residential side. But both of us are spending a lot more time on mixed-use projects, on placemaking, and some of the other diverse commercial components. And we're looking very much forward to bringing all that we've learned in Southwest and throughout the District of Columbia on some of the projects we've been working on to Falls Church, and are really looking forward to this opportunity.
Thank you. In addition, as was mentioned, Rafael Munies, who's our third principal, is actually in Yosemite today with his family. But to give you a sense of how committed we are, he was on a conference call with all of us from Yosemite. So we are very engaged and very excited to be here. I think tonight will be the first night I won't be on the phone at 10:00 p.m. with Wyatt. So looking forward to that as well. Our team in the audience, we have two other EYA partners, as well as a representative from Regency. You just maybe stand and just introduce yourself quickly.
Hi, sure. Sam Stiebel, Vice President of Investments for Regency Centers. Thank you.
How you doing, John? It's Patrick, Regency Centers' Vice President of Project Management.
Clint Quinn. I'm with EYA, one of Evan's partners.
Akash Thakkar, also with EYA, one of Evan's. Good work, Evan. Thank you, Sydney.
And then we also have Kelly Wellen from our office, who's been working really hard on this project. Dave Lasso, who you all know, who is our land use attorney. And we have Murphy Antoine, Antoine over here, who is the planner that you were complimenting. He's the genius who came up with a lot of the imagery that you saw today. I also want to thank the city for having a very low podium. This is the first time in my life that I haven't had, so it's sized appropriately. We'll walk you through just a few images tonight, and then, of course, kick off a dialogue over the next six months that we hope will get into a lot more details over time. This is kind of the perspective image looking towards Route Seven from the Virginia Tech parcel today, or where the Virginia Tech parcel is today, at this Main Street Boulevard that we're trying to create. There were a few critical pieces to this project that, actually, I'll go to the next slide and then come back to that. There were a few critical pieces of the site that really helped govern how we ended up designing the property, one of which is, for those of you who know that part of the city, there's quite a bit of topography. So there's almost 26 feet of grade as you come up the hill from Haycock up towards the high school entrance, which really has a huge impact. You can't do quality retail on a huge slope. And Park City, Utah works great, but they have a captive audience. It's really difficult to do that in most places. And people who come to retail want to be able to stroll. You want outdoor cafe seating to be relatively flat, so your table's not tipping over. So that really did have quite a bit to do with the design of the site. The second part, which was, as mentioned tonight, was this idea of creating a direct connection and visibility to the metro. The city has this amazing resource, even though it's in the county, in the West Falls Church Metro, but it's relatively hidden. And so unless you kind of know where it is or know how to find it, it's not that easy. And we want to make that very clear to everybody, not just the people living in our development, but also to people visiting other businesses or offices and retail residents in the city. Our hope, of course, is to have a more unified district plan that takes that boulevard through the Virginia Tech parcel and the Womata parcel. I'll show you an image of that in a minute. Third, we'd like to have a grocer, and in order to have a grocer, you want great visibility. And so the intersection of Haycock and Leesburg Pike is the perfect location for that grocer. And so that also governed our retail plan, this idea of kind of having the grocer at that main intersection as you come up the road out of the, towards the western part of the city and seeing that grocer and the sign as that will bring. Fourth was the school. And if those of you who remember the original plan that we were asked to respond to, there was a field directly in front of the middle school and high school that separated our project from, the development project we're proposing, from the schools. And that had benefits, it had negatives. The nice thing, it's always great to have a field. It's pretty, it's active. But it also was a boundary that really separated us, our development, from the schools and limited our ability to provide this type of community that feels like it's unified in one community. And so when the city, the school board actually redid their design and came up with this other version, we were thrilled. And we actually immediately responded to it and completely redesigned our entire plan to respond to it. That high school plaza is going to be fantastic. It creates a second open space within the development and right behind what we had always envisioned as a civic building. And I'll show you what that looks like and feels like in a minute, but allows that building to have two fronts to it. One fronting the high school, that will be more student-oriented, and one fronting the retail-oriented space in the center. And then it does, of course, open up this possibility of having above-grade structure parking. And I think it was Councilmember Duncan that mentioned this, we have no idea where parking is going to go. And so to the extent we have the ability in five years, in 10 years, in 15 years, where people are using autonomous vehicles, we may need 10% of the parking that's on this site at some point in the future. And so to have the ability to have a parcel that could provide long-term economic development capacity or school expansion space for the city is a really good saver versus putting that parking below grade. As a resident of D.C. living not far from Columbia Heights, I think one of the biggest mistakes that was made was, you know, when the target came into Columbia Heights, there are two or three levels of below-grade parking that are literally mothballed, with the exception of the top level, because there's just a lack of parking in those spaces. So those ideas came together to help us formulate the plan that you see in front of us, and ultimately created this vision of, you know, different-sized, different-h heights buildings, unique, different architecture amongst the buildings. So it feels like this was a city that popped up over time, not some, you know, a development where every single building looks exactly the same. The center boulevard concept, if you were to look at Santana Row out in California, in San Jose, it's Federal Realty's kind of prime project that has been extremely successful. It has a very similar center of median space where it's activated, where there's Sunday morning yoga classes, and there's farmers' markets, and there's outdoor movie night, and there's, you know, a place to sit. There's private areas where you can sit and have a private conversation, and there's bigger areas where you can see or be seen. And so the concept of that space is for that to be a very active park. And as part of the expertise you've brought to the table with PN Hoffman and EYA, is we have experience on how to activate those types of spaces. I will say, I didn't mention this at the beginning, prior to EYA, I was with Federal Realty for almost eight years, and I spent almost that entire time working on the Pike and Rose project up on Rockville Pike, running that development with a similar kind of mixed-use feel, how to create on what is a huge highway, Rockville Pike, how to create a wonderful place that's an oasis off of that highway. And that's the concept here, through landscaping and good site design, how do we pull people off Seven into a place where once they stop, whether they're walking or parking or biking, they just say, ah, I'm relaxed, the landscaping's nice, it's pretty, I like being here, and they stay. And they spend money in the retail shops, and that creates economic development opportunities for the city. This next image, we've talked about this, that's just the partners that are here today, and the team members. In addition to Dave Lasso, we're also working with local civil engineer Walter Phillips, who you probably all know. And so Karen White will be part of the project team, and Jeff Stuckel. Gore of Slate will be working on the traffic, and we've been working with Clark Builders Group to date on the construction contracting. This next image is a larger district plan. And while, of course, we don't know what will happen ultimately with the Virginia Tech and the Womata parcels, we did submit a response to the RFP request from Virginia Tech, and we have been accepted. So there are now two projects that Virginia Tech is reviewing, ours and the proposal from HIT Construction. And our concept there is, in keeping with what HIT proposed, is this really fantastic academic environment, as well as potential student and faculty housing. And to the extent we are now, the goal would be for, upon this decision, for Virginia Tech to start talking more seriously with both parties, and we'll hopefully see something move forward. I imagine they're a little distracted right now with what's going on with Amazon, but we're hoping that I'll get back on track. And as you can see, even if that happened at a later date, there's an ability to punch that street through towards the metro, so you can have a continuation of the boulevard concept, even if their timeline doesn't line up exactly with the city's. Beyond that, you're seeing images out on the Womata parcels, and we would look forward to working with Womata on a proposal as well, now that we've been selected for the high school. And one nice thing just to note, the distance from Route Seven all the way back towards the turn in the road where you go towards metro is almost the exact length of the retail street at Mosaic, all the way from kind of the Mom's Organic Market, all the way back to the Avalon Bay Residential Building. So to give you a sense of scale or strollability, or the feeling of how long that retail street can be, this development, if the three of them work together, has the opportunity to not just create a retail node, to really create a district where people would come and spend the afternoon. And that's something we look forward to, hopefully, being able to work on. Phase One, we heard loudly and clearly early on, the benefit of having upfront value creation and tax revenue. And so there's two principles that led to this phasing plan. One is, in order to create long-term value, I'm sorry, upfront value, we have to create as much square footage as possible. And secondly, retail does not work if you do it piecemeal. You got to deliver the place, the sense of place, the park spaces, as much retail as possible, all at once, so that you don't feel like you're in the middle of a construction zone when you're coming to eat your outside, you know, your dinner outside. And so this concept allows us to deliver 95% of the retail in Phase One, to deliver the commercial uses, so we have daytime population and people actually eating in those restaurant spaces, and to deliver the nighttime population as well. Restaurants need daytime and nighttime population. They don't survive if they only have one meal a day. And so that's part of this mix of uses, one of the great benefits of it. The other thing we love about this is, from a school's perspective, once we get done with our first phase, they're really protected from the future construction. The Phase Two construction is further away from school, and so they'll have this completed environment immediately upon delivery, hopefully around 2023. It also, one of the concepts we talked about from a merchandising plan was to do something that, as was said here tonight, this evening and weekend entertainment restaurant, a part to it, but also to create opportunities for the students after school to walk out their front doors and have, you know, music lessons, to go to a dance studio, where their parents can pick them up later in the day and know that they're safe and they're right inside their own community. This is an overall perspective view of the images, and obviously, we haven't gotten very detailed in architecture yet, but we will do that in the next phase. Everything in red is the retail on the ground level, and so you can see almost every frontage of these buildings is covered with retail. So as people walk or interact, whether it's on Route Seven or along the project, they'll feel that retail presence. A little bit more detail of the park spaces, which we'll spend a lot of time working on over the next six months and come back to you, about kind of how that can feel, what it can look like, what types of spaces and programming and planning we can do in that open park space. And this is a perspective from actually inside that park space. So you're looking now towards the Virginia Tech parcel, with the hotel to your left and the residential condo to your right. And there'll be these two kiosk buildings inside that park space, you know, an ice cream shop, a cafe, something that really activates them. I'll spend a few seconds on some of the more important elements that we know are key to the city. The hotel is very exciting to us. Hotel creates life in a mixed-use environment. The people, they don't have a kitchen inside their hotel rooms, so that means they're automatically customers of your development if you can capture them there. And they also create an 18-hour environment where they're arriving and going at all hours of the day. So hotels are pretty critical. What we liked about this was this idea of pairing it with a music venue. And so there's nothing public yet, but we have been working on a letter of intent with the music venue, which the committee has been aware of. And so the concept would be to bring that music venue here, have it paired with the hotel. You can come, spend a night, go to a show. The music venue space can be available for conferences and meetings, for city parties, big galas as well. And because it's attached to the hotel, it has this ability to be kind of cooperated. That's part of the music venue, and it'd be part of the civic building, and would face the two park spaces on the second level with a big outdoor deck. Beyond that, actually, the next slide is about that music venue. So looking on the bottom left, you can kind of get a sense, I'm sorry, the bottom right, on the first floor of the building, the red is retail space facing, facing towards the Main Street, which would likely be restaurant space. The back space, which is purple, the upper-left portion is where we envision a music school, and we'll talk about that over the next six months as well. And on the bottom-left side is the entrance to the hotel. There's a kind of an opening going through that building, the idea that people can go back and forth between these quasi-public, quasi-private spaces from the high school plaza to the other park space. On the second level, to the left, what you're seeing is the actual music venue up above the hotel, and then an outside 4,000-square-foot rooftop deck. So on nice nights, that music can kind of spill out onto the rooftop deck. People can be sitting out there having drinks while the music's going on inside. Interaction with the school is really important. So to the extent we have the ability to build the above-grade parking deck, I know this sounds crazy to use a parking deck for placemaking. We actually love it from a placemaking perspective, and it does a few key things. It's a beacon on Route Seven. It's a beacon on Route 7. Architecturally, obviously, it has to be designed attractively. Our vision has been to have, you know, the high school and the middle school marketing and graphics on that garage, so it really welcomes you to the community and it creates an opportunity for people to take pride in their school. And then, secondly, to work with the students of the schools from an art perspective and figure out are there ways to create placemaking and art over time on those garage buildings that would be integrated with the students. And so we think there's a ton of placemaking opportunity right there. And it also creates an edge for the high school plaza versus having a surface parking lot, which just kind of bleeds off into the distance. And so it kind of closes in that plaza on all the four sides. Office vision, we have two office building parcels in the development. The first one you've already heard about is in part of our first phase, and then the second one is, would be the second phase. The idea there is to create the place, create the vision, make this awesome community here or a connection to the Falls Church community, and then have the ability to make, do a much bigger office in the second phase. Residential, we do have three mixes there, senior housing, condo, and rental. And what you're seeing in this image is the wood frame building with the grocery store on the first floor as the first building on the upper closest to you, and then the taller condo buildings behind that, the senior building being the third one on the block that's closest to the school. Placemaking is probably the thing that gets folks at EYA and PN Hoffman extremely excited on a daily basis. If any of you have been down to the Wharf, my view is it's the most successful project that's been built in the region, certainly in the 15 years I've lived here. And so the vision that PN Hoffman had to take that place, if any of you had been there before, and turn it into something unbelievable is really amazing. And they actually broke the norms in a lot of ways. So for a typical retail person, you would say, oh, it will never work, they have one-sided retail facing the water, you know, you need to have a double-sided retail street. There's so many kind of planning paradigms we all believe in as urbanists. And they broke that mold, but they did it by creating unbelievable placemaking in the public spaces and making it a place you want to linger. And so between the entertainment uses, the restaurant uses, the daily activities, it's extremely exciting, and that's the type of, you know, level of detail quality we want to think about here. And it goes to the materials you use on the streets, it goes to the landscaping, it goes to the water fountains, it goes to the placemaking, the little imagery, you know, even the little fire covers that say the Wharf on them. You know, how do you create something where when you're there, you know it feels great? You might not necessarily know why you love it if you're not really into design, but you walk away knowing you want to come back. And that's something we can have here in Falls Church. And investing in those memorable spaces by bringing the community there, so arts festivals, farmers' markets, movie nights, you know, things we can do to get the public to know this space, not just the residents of the city, but also from well beyond your limits and so that those people recognize Falls Church and keep coming back over and over again. So that's the presentation tonight. I do want to say thank you so much to the people we've worked with so far, both people on the committee, a lot with Wyatt himself over the last month particularly, and Ross and David on the committee over the last month, Carol. It's been great working with all of you. We are very humbled to have been accepted and extremely excited to be part of the city's team going forward, and we hope to deliver something fantastic for the city.
So do we, and we thank you so much and offer our congratulations. Are there any questions that anyone has? Oh, we've got Evan with us now. All right. If not, we look forward to working with you, and certainly there'll be plenty of time for that, and public engagement and the like will continue and begin in earnest.